Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 1st, 2025 Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Spotswood Graves if he'd come forward with an invocation. Reverend, thank you for being here once again, as always.
Thank you for having us, sir, all of you. Let us pray. O God, infinite, eternal, lover of variety, long-suffering. As we gather to make decisions affecting residents of Dare County, we offer words of gratitude for your safekeeping for our lives in this world since we were last here. We praise you for your long-suffering mercy for all of our wrongs. We offer thanks for people who have shown hospitality, for Native Americans in their early years of pale-faced people being here, for persons who have fed lonely and hungry neighbors, for the spirit of generosity shown in food pantry gifts, and the standing for programs that help the poor and needy, increased hospitality that we may welcome those we do not know and those we might fear. We thank you for a government guided by the Constitution, for our president, the Congress, the courts, and for giving us the privilege of choosing our leaders. Here in this room now, we thank you for our county commissioners and for all who serve Dare County. Lift up especially each we recognize today for faithful service. Protect all who defend us. Guide all who stand for truth and justice, and draw us more and more into the work of being civil to each other. In this time, as the days of daylight grow shorter, as the darkness comes around us, we thank you for the hope, the sure assurance that you will bring light, continue to spare us, and use us. This is our prayer, O God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Spotswood. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll now turn the meeting over to our clerk, to the board.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, commissioners. At the December meeting every year, the board is required to elect a chairman and elect a vice chairman. No second is necessary for a motion, and it only takes four votes to elect the chairman. At this time, are there any nominations?
Nominate Bob Woodard.
All right. Bob Woodard, is there any other nominations? At this time, I will declare nominations closed. At this time, please raise your hand if you would vote for Commissioner Woodard as chairman. One, two, three, four, five. All right. I declare that closed, and Chairman Woodard, you are now the chairman again. And I will turn this meeting over to you to elect our vice chairman.
Thank you very much, Skylar.
And to the board, I certainly can't thank you enough for your continued vote of confidence in my leadership. I really appreciate your support wholeheartedly. It means a lot to me, and I will continue to work as diligently and hard as I possibly can for this county and this board. That brings us to election of vice chair, and I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Steve House as vice chair.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to nominate Steve House as vice chair? Any other nominations? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Congratulations, Vice Chairman House.
Thank you. I felt a great pleasure to be here. It is truly a privilege to serve with each and every one of you, and I thank you for your support, and I've really enjoyed this past year being Bob's right-hand man and continue to do so, and I thank you all for your confidence and your support.
Congratulations. Great. County manager.
Good morning. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Item three on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Before I get started, I'd just like to recognize a few folks out there today. We have with us the chairman of the Board of Education, David Twitty. David, thank you for being here. We have the vice chair, Ron Payne. Ron, thank you for being here. We also have a former BOE member, Susan Bothell. Susan, thank you for being here. And certainly, last but not least, Wally Overman, former vice chair of Dare County Board of Commissioners. Pardon?
Ron Payne.
He said Ron.
I mentioned you. Yeah. Get with the program, Ms. Balance. As most of you are aware, well, before I get started, I hope everyone, this past week was Thanksgiving week, and certainly that's my most favorite holiday for myself and my family and trust, and hope everyone in this audience and those that are listening today had a very blessed Thanksgiving. As always, laughter is the best medicine, and I like to start with a little humor at every meeting. Commissioner Balance, I think you will like this one. I should mention that this was sent to me by a woman. According to the Alaska Department of Fish and Game, while both male and female reindeer grow antlers in the summer, male reindeers lose their antlers in late November, early December after the mating season. Males are typically without antlers until the following spring. However, females keep theirs throughout the winter because they are often pregnant and they need them to protect their food resources from other reindeer. They shed their antlers after they give birth, usually in the month of May. This means that all of Santa's reindeers, from Rudolph to Blitzen, had to be female. So she goes on to say that we should have known that only a woman could drag around a fat man wearing a red velvet suit all over the world in one night and not get lost. I don't make them up, I just tell them. I want to share with you a letter. We continue to work daily, this board does, on NC-12 issues. Buxton, Avon, the whole entire county, we're working diligently. We've met with DEQ Secretary recently. We've met with Transportation Secretary several weeks back, Transportation Chairman of the Board. We've all taken tours. We're getting ready to have the new Secretary of Transportation down here again, just to show them what's going on in our county. And I recently wrote a letter that I'd like to read and share with you that I'm hoping we get somewhere with this. As a matter of fact, this is a first for me. After this meeting, the county manager and I will be heading to Washington, D.C. We hope to talk to our legislators there as well, but I will be testifying tomorrow morning before Congress on some parks and recs issues and concerns. But this letter I wrote took me about three hours to hand sign every single one of them, but I wrote a letter to every representative, senator, and legislator in the state of North Carolina, as well as the governor, and I sent this about a week and a half ago. And then in Jan., when they go back in session, the first of the year, we'll be going up there to lobby each one of them individually. But I'd like to share this letter with you. It's going to take a minute or so, but it's important for the public to be aware that we're working diligently every day with issues that involve Dare County. Dear Representative, I'm Robert L. Bob Woodard, Senior Chairman of Dare County Board of Commissioners. I write to you today with a heavy heart and a profound sense of urgency. For generations, Dare County has been defined by its pristine beaches and breathtaking coastal landscapes, natural treasures that draw millions of visitors each year and serve as the very foundation of our communities, economy, and way of life. In recent months, however, we have witnessed alarming and unprecedented changes along portions of our shoreline, particularly in small areas of the villages of Buxton and Rodanthe on Hatteras Island, where severe erosion and repeated structural failures have created significant public safety, environmental concerns. In addition, portions of NC-12, the sole transportation lifeline for Hatteras Island, are growing increasingly vulnerable and often forced to close during even minor coastal storms, disrupting daily life and critical access for residents, visitors, and emergency services. Each year, more than 3 million visitors, people visit our beaches and national parks, generating millions of dollars in state tax revenue. In fact, Dare County is one of a few donor counties in North Carolina in that the county contributes more to the state than the state provides back to the county. Dare County has always taken care of its own. Dare County and five of its oceanfront communities have invested more than $275 million in local beach nourishment projects and millions more to keep our inlets open, ensuring our fishermen can access their highway to work. We've done this with virtually no federal support and very limited assistance from the state. However, today, small areas of our oceanfront in the villages of Buxton and Rodanthe have deteriorated to the point where we can no longer sustain these efforts. We need help, your help. There are several specific ways the state can make a meaningful difference. One, beach nourishment fund. Several years ago, the General Assembly established a beach nourishment fund but never allocated resources to it. I respectfully request that the legislature appropriate funding to this account on an annual basis to assist coastal counties, not to replace local investment, but to help sustain it in protecting our shoreline and our state's tourism economy. Two, proactive solutions for North Carolina Highway 12. NC DOT crews continually do an outstanding job responding to sand and water overwash, often working tirelessly to open the road as quickly as possible. However, proactive, long-term solutions are urgently needed before portions of the road become permanently impassable. The North Carolina 12 Task Force comprised of representatives from Dare County, Hyde County, the National Park Service, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Southern Environmental Law Center, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation worked collaboratively over several years to develop a comprehensive plan to maintain NC-12 in both the short term and long term that would ensure sustainable access to both Dare County, Hyde Counties. You can view the full report at darenc.gov/nc12. Number three, hardened structures. Current state policy prohibits the use of hardened structures such as groins along the coast. Nourishment alone is no longer sufficient. We need the ability to use every proven tool available to stabilize our shoreline and safeguard our communities. I respectfully ask that the General Assembly reconsider and lift the ban on these protective measures. This request is made with great respect and deep conviction. Dare County's leaders and citizens have always worked hard to address challenges on our own, but the situation has now reached a critical point. With your support, we can preserve our count coastline, protect public infrastructure, and sustain the economic engine that benefits all of North Carolina. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would be honored to discuss this matter further at your convenience, and I can be reached by email at woodard@darenc.gov or by phone (252) 216-8240. Respectfully, Robert L. Bob Woodard, Senior Chairman, Dare County Board of Commissioners. I'm hoping we can get some leverage with this. As I said, first of the year, we'll be traveling to, once the legislature is in session, I'd like to take a copy of this letter and put it in front of them once again, and that's why I sent it personally to them, to their email, to their mailing address that they received this letter personally from me. With that being said, and my last item I have, it's, this has just happened since Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, we lost a true citizen, hard-working gentleman who was a commissioner in Kill Devil Hills, Terry Gray, a dear friend, passed away the evening of Thanksgiving. Terry grew up on the Outer Banks. He graduated from Manio High School. He went to Wayne Community College, and he dedicated his life to public service. Terry, he devoted 25 years to the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Ferry Operations as a manager. He was a devoted family man, and Terry will be sorely missed. He was, he's defined by service to his town, his county, and the people he loved, and his impact in Kill Devil Hills and the Outer Banks will be long-lasting, and his memory will be cherished by all who knew him. There'll be viewing this coming Wednesday at Twiford Funeral Home from 5:00 to 7:00, and then his service will be on Thursday at 2:00 p.m. at Twiford Funeral Home here in Manio. So please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers, and with that being said, I'd like to have a moment of silence. County manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item four on the agenda, and that is the presentation of service pins, and we have only one this morning, and Elizabeth Riley, if you'd come forward, please.
Morning. You all know Elizabeth. Elizabeth's our HR director, and this is her 15th anniversary, so time flies. I don't know if you know what that means to be an HR director. Well, let me back up. She comes to us with experience. This isn't somebody that was green out of school when she came here. She'd worked for ECU for a while. She'd worked for the Orange Water and Sewer Authority in the HR department, and she'd done other things in HR. She'd been to Duke and gotten certificates, and so she came to us prepared and ready to go to work and hit the ground running 15 years ago. To tell you a little bit about what an HR director does, she has five employees. They're here sitting today, but those five employees and Elizabeth manage our HR department, which means that she interacts with 850 or so full and part-time employees. She interacts with, I don't know, more than 1,000 probably retired people, and she deals with all the benefits, all the issues that come up among that whole population of people that deal with her and her staff every day. Not only does she do that, but she does all the other benefit compliance work. She does all the things that have to be done to keep the HR side of the house running and running smoothly, and she does that well. She's also the person that usually nobody sees until they have a problem. Not many people come running up to HR and say, oh, what a great job, or what a wonderful day I'm having, and here I am. They got a problem with their retirement. They got a problem with their health insurance. They got a problem with their boss or their employee, or we have a problem with them, but there's always a problem involved, and she and her staff manage those things and handle those things with grace and professionalism and do a great job with that. She's married. She has two boys. Her boys are in high school. She remains busy outside of the house, outside of work. I think her kids play baseball, and I'm not sure if they still play soccer or not, but they play basketball and swim. And so they have a very active and busy lifestyle, like any of you all that have had teenagers do, and yet she's here and manages all these other things at the same time she does that at home. So we're grateful to have you, Elizabeth. Thank you for 15 years and hope we got 15 more coming.
Thank you. There's not a day that I don't wake up that I don't love coming to my job, and I think that means something. For 15 years, it's been a pleasure to work for Dare County and to serve you all, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we have our Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month for November will be presented by Jessica King.
I take it he was unaware of this?
He was unaware, yes. It's a surprise.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Dustin was nominated by one of his employees whose words are, "I am nominating Dustin in recognition of his exceptional dedication, leadership, and service to our community. During the recent storms that impacted the southern beaches, Dustin remained on-site for several days away from home, working late into the night and leading crews through harsh weather. His presence ensured the safety and functionality of our water system under extremely challenging conditions. This level of commitment reflects his deep sense of responsibility to both the job and the residents who rely on clean, accessible water. Dustin consistently demonstrates outstanding public service. He communicates clearly and respectfully with residents, even in high-pressure situations, earning their trust and appreciation. His hands-on involvement in repairing the Buxton Water System after two major storms was instrumental in restoring service quickly and safely. His calm leadership and problem-solving skills helped guide the team through difficult repairs with minimal disruption to the public. Dustin embodies the values of our department, resilience, professionalism, and community-first service. In addition to what Dustin's coworker has written, I have also witnessed firsthand his dedication. It is moments such as the recent storms that highlight Dustin's character, but it is the everyday moments that leave the greatest impression. Every day, Dustin works with his team to go above and beyond to set the highest job performance standards. In a line of work where most people do not understand the details, Dustin takes the time to work with customers and explain the work being performed to ensure they have a better understanding and feel comfortable. And as previously mentioned, Dustin was crucial during the storms this fall, from staying on-site during the storms to helping address all of the issues after. Dustin sets an example that his employees follow and is a major contributing factor to why the Water Department has such an amazing and strong distribution crew. I am so happy to be able to present Dustin with November's Employee of the Month Award."
Wow.
Thank you.
Much love.
There you go.
Wow, sufficient. Our December Employee of the Month will be presented in January. Couldn't be here today. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Before we go to public comment, those of you that just received an award, if you'll please step right outside with Caitlin to get a picture. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, raise your hand. I recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, I have first is Charlie Parker.
Welcome, Mr. Parker.
Good morning. First, I have to say something about Terry Gray. I was his mailman, and anytime anyone ever mentioned Terry, the next words out of their mouths was, "He was a good man," and that's it. So I rise today. When I looked at the agenda package, I have one question. There's a budget amendment where $976,996 are moved from the appropriated balance fund to the debt service fund. The explanation is this is the debt service for the early college series LOBs based on the final amortization. My question is, have we received the funds to offset this from the state? Or are we sitting out here, whatever, and the state doesn't have a budget, and are we going to get funds from them? Do we have an answer?
This was public comment.
This was public comment. This was public comment.
Okay. Well, then, at some point, someone should answer that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Christina Durham, or I'm sorry, Drummond.
Welcome this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Woodard. Commissioners, thank you again for appealing to the General Assembly in response to my November 3rd comments. That step mattered. But let me be unmistakably clear, NC-12 has been eminently threatened for years. Nothing about its vulnerability is new. The only thing that has changed is the speed, scale, and severity of the erosion destroying our coastal shoreline. For decades, NC DOT has repeatedly rebuilt Highway 12 under emergency exceptions, and every one of those actions proves two things. One, Highway 12 is critical public infrastructure. Two, long-term stabilization should have happened years ago. Dare County cannot simply acknowledge the emergency. You must drive every study, every discussion, every permit, and every agency toward permanent stabilization, not temporary sand pushes and not partial symbolic repairs. The single groin repair is not just insufficient, it is dangerous. The plan to repair only one remaining groin at the FUD site is a fundamental engineering mistake. The Navy installed three groins because they were designed to function together. Rebuilding only one will accelerate downdrift, erosion, deepen scour, destabilize adjacent shoreline, and hand opponents fabricated proof that hardened structures fail. It hurts Cape Hatteras, it sabotages statewide reform, and the public needs to hear this clearly. North Carolina law already allows Dare County to rebuild all three groins immediately without waiting for new legislation. The law is clear. Here is the exact authority. Under GS 113A through 115.1, A4 NC, erosion control structures that historically existed and served a public purpose may be reconstructed or replaced within their original footprint. The three Navy-built groins qualify. They historically existed and were constructed for shoreline protection of a federal military installation, undeniably a public purpose. The law does not require the original facility to still exist, continuous maintenance, or active federal use. It requires only that the structures historically existed and served a public purpose at the time they were built. Both conditions are indisputably satisfied. Rebuilding these groins is not new hardening. It is legal restoration of a pre-existing engineered system, including groins that are now completely gone. Second, 15A NCAC 07H .0308 A1A authorizes erosion control measures when public infrastructure is eminently threatened and when the original structure was constructed and maintained for its intended purpose. The Navy groins were constructed and used for erosion control. Their intended purpose continues today because they now- Their intended purpose continues today because they now protect Highway 12, utilities, and emergency access. Together, these laws give Dare County a valid, immediate, defensible pathway to reconstruct all three groins. This is not debatable; it is the law. And environmental objections collapse under their weight. For decades, KAMA, CRC, NCDEQ have allowed NC DOT to violate 07H.0308 during every overwash, bulldozing dunes, scraping beach sand, trenching and berm construction, pushing foreign sand inland, all with no environmental impact studies, all under emergency exemptions dozens of times a year. If the state can repeatedly violate 07H.0308 to keep NC-12 open under emergency auspices, then Dare County can use the same legal authority to stabilize NC-12 permanently. Same road, same hazard, same emergency, same law. Federal ownership does not block reconstruction. A concern has been raised about the National Park Service owning the FUD site. Let me address that directly. While MPS now manages the former FUD's property, that does not negate North Carolina's statutory authority under GS 113A through 115.1 or 15A NCAC 07H.0308. Federal ownership does not eliminate Dare County's right to pursue reconstruction of historically existing erosion control structures. Under the Coastal Zone Management Act, MPS must comply with state coastal policy and cannot arbitrarily oppose stabilization, project protecting critical public infrastructures such as Highway 12. MPS may complicate the process, but they cannot lawfully stop it. You already have the data. The 2013 Shoreline Management Feasibility Study provides the baseline engineering and environmental analysis needed to begin the updated EIS today. The next step must be immediate and public. One, adopt a formal board resolution to establish the administrative record. Two, demand joint legislative hearings with DEQ, CRC, MPS, and NC DOT. Three, require DEQ and CRC to initiate the reconstruction pathway under existing law. Require 30, 60, and 90-day environmental review, and form a multi-county coastal coalition. Submit the full funding roadmap that I will provide to you. The public must hear the truth, not filtered version. Dare County cannot rely on the island-free press or what many residents call the island-filtered press because only select narratives seem to escape the editing room.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another public comment this morning? Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Any public comment from Buxton?
Yes. One comment from Jay Phillips.
Welcome, Ms. Phillips. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. Who was that? Who was before me? What was her name again?
I'm sorry, speak up.
Who was the lady just before me?
Lady, who was the speaker?
Christine Drummond.
Did you hear that?
I did. I did. I wish I could speak as fit as she can. That was a very excellent statement she made. You're mostly dummy, but I'll repeat. I am the chairman of Hatteras Community Sailing. We've been around since 2019. We acquired a harbor property in Buxton, at the Buxton Harbor. We've got a lot in five years. We've got kids who are recognized and accomplished from Annapolis to Charleston, or from Hatters Island, the Outer Banks that we've trained. I've been a builder, a harbor captain, a teacher, coach, sailwrecking, my God, for 40 years. I started when I was 16 in a boatyard to have degrees in Maryland. I'm 58. Can you hear me?
There's an echo or something. I'm sorry, sir. It's difficult to hear you. I'm sorry, Matt, please.
What am I supposed to speak into?
Well, I'm in the microphone.
Light's up there. Okay. And I want to try to speak clearer. Is that any better?
Yeah, just make sure you speak directly into the microphone, if you will.
It's just up there. Okay. I thought that was it. Sorry. Why am I here today? We currently have a property at Buxton Harbor, okay? We've been there the last five years. There's three immediate reasons I'm coming to you. Number one, on everybody's mind is NC DOT and Route 12, right? If, for example, Hurricane Emily had actually hit us a couple months ago, okay, it'd be a foregone conclusion that Buxton Harbor would be your only way to access Buxton for quite a while. Sandy Bay would be washed out, North Buxton would be washed out, all right? It's the only dredged harbor that goes into Buxton, and it stays dredged because the boatyard needs it to get more fishing boats in and out, all right? So I've been in communication with Jet Dixon about this, and he is working with me to see if there's something that NC DOT might have an interest to prepare in advance for when the storm actually does get and wash the roads out. I hope it doesn't, but it very well could have happened a couple months ago and has been tremendously awful. Training, all right? We already train people. We already have a huge fleet of assets to train people. We have coach boats, safety boats, sailboats, 46-foot workboats with big diesels in them. We've got all kinds of stuff. We've worked really hard, not just me, but the whole community has helped get these assets together, all right? And we're kind of at a crossroads right now. If I can't find some sort of help, it's probably all going to dissolve thoroughly. But not just kids that we teach. I mean, the Ferry Division needs training for employees. And let me give you an anecdotal example of what can be done through collaboration between our non-awful public schools in the Ferry Division. Did you know that a 16-year-old can get a captain's license? Does anybody know that? Can you hear me?
They don't respond to that.
Okay. So, yes, a 16-year-old can get a captain's license, but to do that, they have to have five years of experience, 360 days on the water. What program is going to give an 11-year-old, four hours counts as a day on the water? Our program does. Our kids, starting at 11, by the age of 16, are now eligible to apply to test for their provisional captain's licenses, all right? Let's say they collaborated with the public school system. Wouldn't it be kind of interesting in the Ferry Division if a kid who's 16 in Hatteras can now get an internship through the public schools at the Ferry Division who actually holds a Merchant Mariner certificate? By the time they're 18, okay, this type of program, an 18-year-old kid with a captain's license that converts and upgrades to a full captain's license and master's license at 18 could have a 1,600-ton license at 18 years old. Would that be an innovative program? I think it would really be an innovative program.
Wonderful.
Okay. Lastly, economic development. There's a new generation of passenger vessels coming, okay? It's taking place in 2025, 2026 around the country. They're fast, they're efficient, they're electric, they don't cost a lot of money, they don't take a lot of fuel, they run around 50 passengers snacks, all right? Wouldn't it be wonderful for Buxton and Mike and I, someday, number one, to have that type of vessel running in and out of that Buxton with 50 passengers?
Mr. Phillips, your time has expired.
All right, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment?
No further comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment. We've moved to Item 7 on the agenda, and this is a presentation from the Dare County Early College, and Cassie Mount is here for that presentation.
Ms. Mount, welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you all.
I just want to, behalf of Mr. Bassnight, he's unable to make it today. He's doing interviews for the Manio High School principal position.
Yes. Thank you for seeing me today. I'm very excited to share with you some of the progress taking place at Dare Early College. You can drive through Manio and see the physical progress that's taking place with the structure, which is awesome and exciting to see for everyone, but I want to assure you that inside of COA tucked upstairs, our students and staff are making great progress as well. A school is made up of people, and we are being very intentional about creating relationships, about coming up with processes that we can put in place, and then core instruction that's going to benefit our students for years to come. Back in September, we began the process of developing the mission and vision of Dare All parents, students, staff were given the opportunity to answer these four questions. Why does Dare Early College exist? What impact do we want our school to have on students and on our community? What are some values that make our school unique? How should our graduates contribute to their community and futures? From stakeholder responses, several themes emerged: a focus on opportunity, commitment to growth and aspiration, perseverance and goal orientation, service leadership, individualized support, and adaptability. Our next step was to ask students questions related to the selection of a school mascot, and from their responses, some common themes emerged and made it very clear that our mascot needed to symbolize resilience, self-discovery, courage, leadership, critical thinking, and From all of these responses, we developed the following mission and vision. Our mission is to empower students to chart new courses, discover their passions, thrive in learning, and lead with purpose and courage. Our vision is that Dare Early College is cultivating a community of leaders who navigate challenges with purpose, courage, innovation, and integrity as they guide and serve their In short, we are empowering our students to discover, thrive, and lead. For many reasons, the mascot that best embodies the mission and vision of Dare Early College is the Dare Early College Mariners. Mariners discover. They chart new courses, exploring the unknown with curiosity and courage. Even now, just a few months in, I'm watching our students do just that, and we're taking charting new courses quite literally. Our COA liaison, John Hunting, has helped students develop a four- or five-year plan that maps out every college course they would need to take to stay on track to achieve their associate's degree or career certification. Mariners thrive. They rely on skill, preparation, and teamwork to succeed through challenges and change. Students are coming We're helping students develop habits that help them think beyond themselves, community service projects, outreach, and then requirements for graduation based on community service as well. By definition, a mariner is a person who navigates or assists in the navigating of a ship. And that's a pretty broad definition, but what I love about it is the fact that a mariner encompasses a range of professions, to name a few: merchant mariners, members of the U.S. Coast Guard, naval officers and sailors, commercial fishermen, marine engineers, cruise ship crews, research vessel scientists, harbor pilots, deep-sea divers, salvage operators, oceanographers and marine researchers. The application of this concept to Dare Early College is profound. Just as the term "mariner" unites individuals across several nautical professions, our mariner mascot will unite students pursuing a variety of career pathways. At this time, our student body is composed of aspiring artists, nurses, welders, teachers, archaeologists, firefighters, engineers, boat builders, and the list goes on. Personally, my grandfather was a merchant marine born in Buxton and also served in the U.S. Coast Guard, and my other grandfather, a Wan Chee's commercial fisherman. So I know a little thing or two about mariners, and I've never met a mariner who didn't have grit. And my goal is that in the future, when people look at graduates of Dare Early College, they can say the same. I never met a mariner who didn't have grit. Our goal is to help students chart their courses, navigate challenges, develop that grit, and follow their own horizons. The Board of Education approved the adoption of our mascot, Mariner, back in November, and we had a celebration. We took a walking field trip to the Roanoke Island Maritime Museum where Mr. Jim reiterated everything that I've just mentioned and explained to our students exactly what it means to be a mariner. These are pictures of our students exploring the museum right there in downtown Manio. And then they enjoyed a celebratory lunch from Garden Deli, and then followed by our very first Mariners Ball in the evening. I want to thank you for your support of Dare Early College. We're making a difference in the lives of our young people, and it means a lot to have your support, and I thank you for having me here today.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Let's not leave yet.
Sure.
We might have some questions.
Of course.
This is kind of a monument. Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in here, guys.
No, go ahead.
You're fine.
It was a pretty monumental achievement in terms of the approval, the commencement, the beam setting.
Yes.
I was at the service. I understand you were taken away by another unforeseen incident.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, that was not serious and was resolved.
Thank you, yes, our student is just fine.
Just fine.
Thank you. And I will say that Barnhill was very kind in lifting me up just before Thanksgiving break so that I was also able to sign the beam.
Oh, really? You went up in the bucket?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Hard hat and all.
That was very good.
Thank you.
See, again, Barnhill doing a first-rate job.
Once again.
[inaudible]
I do have photos, yes.
Cassie Mount dangling one arm from the crane, signing with the other arm.
Yes, sir.
On a serious note, again, I'm very excited about this. This is a wonderful addition to our community and to the opportunity for the kids here in Dare County. I continue to read with concern and frankly, being a bit troubled by counties, states, national, you know, almost pick-your-level of measurement in terms of percentage achievement in reading and math, and I see most frequently shown third and eighth grade levels where I'll see, and again, it's alarming, math proficiency, 21% at grade level.
Yes.
Reading, 29% at grade level. And I understand this is early college, so we're not talking about third graders or eighth graders.
Sure.
But I'm going to ask you very specifically. Will you be measuring and then if finding any shortfalls, addressing math and/or reading skills capability of these students so that at least the vast majority are indeed competent, capable, and hopefully excelling at the two fundamental skills to success: mathematics and reading?
Absolutely.
Specifically?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, we've already begun. Every student in Dare County and Early College is no exception. They take what's called screeners at the beginning, middle, and end of the school year, and it is an intuitive assessment that is untimed, and as students answer questions specifically in reading and in math, the test tailors.
Right.
And so it's tracking the grade level.
Right.
On which each student is performing.
That's amazing.
It is.
That's exactly what I was hoping you were going to say.
Yes, absolutely. So our students have taken those assessments at the beginning of the year. When we come back from winter break, they'll take the mid-year assessment, but even now, we've used that data to identify students who need extra support in math and reading, and our teachers are putting in interventions to support them.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
Yes, sir. We do have a 30-minute block in our day. We call office hours. Different schools in Dare County call it different things. At First Flight High, it's fly time, brave time, tomahawk time, but the point is, it's a period of time where students can be pulled for intervention to any class in which they may need help. And at the Early College, we're being very specific with that time to make sure we're helping students develop those foundational reading and math skills.
Okay, that's Okay, that's what I was hoping you were going to say.
Thank you, yes, sir. Yes, any other questions?
No, Cass, I just wanted to say one thing. We're going, I'm going to have a little miles apply to go to the Early College.
Great.
And the reason is, is because of you.
Thank you.
You are such an excellent educator, and I have all the trust in the world in you establishing that new school. The reason I was so pro the school back when it was a 50-50 issue, back with all the money issues.
Yes.
When I heard that they were going to appoint you as the principal there, I was so excited because I know that you are the right person for the job and that you can usher in a new era of education in Dare County.
Thank you.
That will not only educate our children, but provide job opportunities straight out of high school where they can afford to live here.
Thank you.
And that's the most important part for me, is having our kids have the opportunity to live here. And I think you're going to do a great job.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, thank you.
From watching this whole journey from the Board of Ed to where we are, to where I sit now, and seeing the, everybody come out for the signing was so, it was so exciting. And the excitement in the students.
Yes.
And you, as a leader of that school, I know have helped to instill that excitement for them. So thank you for all you're doing, and I cannot wait to see what this first class does.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're doing great.
I appreciate your support, thank you all.
And on behalf of the Board of Education Commissioners, thank you all so much for the service and dedication you've proven, day in and day out, of supporting our school system. And you're right, Carson, we did get the right one.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yes.
I can't imagine, I need to amend the agenda to add item 8B. Lee Nettles from the Tourism Board has a Tourism Impact Grant issue items he'd like to present to the board. Without, without any opposition, we'll add that to 8A, 8B, excuse me.
Right, that leads us to item 8A, and this is the OBX Jeep Invasion Presentation. And Vice Chairman House, that's for you.
Thank you, I'm going to jump down to the podium for this real quick. Fellow Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do this. The OBX Jeep Charities Board and Group, we put on the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion every year. And our board consists of Kim Jones, our secretary, Kerry Colson is our treasurer, Jared Wibley is our junior vice president, and we have Rich Paul as our senior vice president, and also myself as president. Each year, we put on the Jeep Invasion and have a great time with, we bring a lot of jeepers into the Outer Banks. This year, over 800 jeeps came and invaded our beaches. And we had a wonderful time. And I cannot go any further than this in also recognizing a gentleman that we've, several of us have recognized already today. He helped us with our first Jeep Invasion and worked it under his nonprofit for our first year before we were able to get our nonprofit started, and that's Terry Gray. And we cannot thank him enough for his contribution. And it just goes to show that even one man can promote something in this community that will live far beyond our years. And I can't say that enough about Terry. That's the, that's the man that he, that he was. Also, in thinking with, with many thanks, our corporate sponsor, which is Outer Banks Jeep, they do a tremendous job in helping us promote and put everything together. Also, the Dare County Tourist Bureau. Thank you, Lee, for helping, helping us with what we do. Also, the town of Nagshead and the town of Kitty Hawk. And I also want to reach out and also thank Jolly Roger Restaurant and also Shipwrecks. They hold different parties and stuff during the Jeep Invasion to help us celebrate with, with their, their things going on and with some after-party stuff for it. And this year, we're going to give out some money. It's December, it's the time to give, and we want to give. And I will say this to start off with, with this year being the fifth year of the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion, with the total amount of donations we're giving out over the cumulative five years, including this year, $196,000 to local communities. Our main charities this year, Hearts of Hope, which gives toys to underprivileged children here in, here in the area of Dare and Currituck Counties. We raise several toys throughout the event, and we're going to have a shopping spree with the Executive Committee of the Jeep Invasion under the direction of Terry Colson. And we're going to have another shopping spree to make up the difference. They will be receiving $10,000 worth of toys to give to underprivileged children in Dare and Currituck Counties so that they can have a Christmas. Room at the Inn, Sherri, are you here?
Yes.
Ah, there she is. All right. Room at the Inn, I think all of us are aware of it, of what they do. They provide housing and counseling for our homeless, especially during the winter months. And we've given, with another corporate sponsor of ours is Five Below, we've already given roughly $7,000 in donations to them, to the room for incidentals of clothing and things of that nature. And we want to make up that difference too, and also present Room at the Inn, to Sherri, a check for $3,000.
Thank you so much.
Your phone. Thank you. Let's try to.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Sure.
Room in the Inn is blessed to get this, and I need to explain a little bit. Our, currently, we can only go from November 1st till the end of April. And that's six months out of the year. There's other six, six other months that we're trying desperately to be a year-round shelter. But we need the support from organizations like this. It takes about $350,000 a year for us to get through. 50% of that is from the general public. 25% of that is in kind goods, and the rest, we get, we get $25,000 from you all. But to be a year-round shelter, we need your support and a whole lot of other support as well. So thank you so much for heading us toward that direction. We are actively working on it right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Later on, this afternoon, we'll be at the town of Kitty Hawk. And every year, the town of Kitty Hawk lets us do a beach ride on their beaches, which as you know, the town of Kitty Hawk does not allow driving on their beaches. They do however, can allow it for a charity organization in which they've allowed us to do that now for the last four years. So later on this afternoon, at the town of Kitty Hawk's meeting, we'll be donating a check to the Kitty Hawk Police Department for $3,500, and also to the Kitty Hawk Ocean Rescue for $3,500 for helping us do that and put that on. Our other main organization that we donate to is synonymous with Jeeps. And that's our veterans, because we know that's where our Jeeps come from. Tim Spence, if you could come up, please. Tim is from the Wounded Warriors in Action, and he's going to give you a little bit of what they do, and we'll follow up with it.
Good morning, my name is Tim Spence. I'm retired Master Sergeant, U.S. Army, Purple Heart recipient, Operation Iraqi Freedom in 2008. I've been affiliated with Wounded Warriors in Action since about 2009. The idea was founded from Lieutenant John McDaniel, Lieutenant Colonel John McDaniel. In 2007, we become a 501(c)(3), and 2008. This will be the 14th year for the OBX Fins and Feathers. But Wounded Warriors in Action is a service organization for Purple Heart recipients. That's our criteria for the veterans we serve. Veterans that were wounded in combat. That really makes us unique from the rest of them. So with our event, we do, Wounded Warriors in Action does events all across the United States, predominantly hunting and fishing. We want to honor our veterans' service and sacrifice, our Purple Heart recipient's service and sacrifice. We want to connect them with fellow sportsmen, like-minded veterans. And we want to help them heal through their camaraderie of a weekend of outdoor activities. So with that being said, OBX Fins and Feathers, this will be our 14th year running this event. It's one of the longest-running events in Wounded Warriors in Action. I think there's only two or three that have been actually running longer. It's, it's a real unique event. It starts from Virginia Beach Airport with the escort to the state line, through Currituck County, through Dare County. We host our heroes in southern shores. We hunt predominantly in Currituck County, but we do incorporate tuna fishing out of Wan Chee's. This year, we're actually incorporating waterfowl hunting out of Wan Chee's. So it's a unique event across two states, across multiple county cooperation. A lot of amenities are donated through Dare County, housing, food. It's just a outpour of love, support from Dare and Currituck County. Like I said, it's, it's a very unique. A lot of our events, we have to pay. This one, most everything's donated. There's a few expenses we have to pay on ground, but there's, you know, there's still admin stuff on the backside. But when our heroes will come in, we fly them in at no cost to the heroes. From the time they leave their house, it's no cost to the time they arrive home. So transportation, food, lodging, hunting license, everything they need, we provide. Shotguns, clothing if they need it. But it's a weekend of healing. This event will typically have, with myself, will have 11 Purple Heart recipients. 10% of the United States serve, 1% are Purple Heart recipients. So if you do the math, they have 11 Purple Hearts in one area. That's a, a pretty unique feature. But the healing, the process, the event is not about killing ducks, catching fish. It's, that's the reason we get these guys together. And the big healing aspect is talking about what they've gone through, where they need help. And I can guarantee you that when you put 10 guys together, if one has a question, somebody can answer to help steer in the right direction. It's, it's a great event, appreciate the support, appreciate the community's support because we couldn't hold this event without it. This year's event's going to be January 7th through 11th, or excuse me, in 2026. And it'll be 7th through 11th, I'm, I'm, I think of hunting seasons as a year. But the escort will come in on the 7th, the heroes will come in, we'll hunt and fish eight, nine, 10, and they'll depart for home on the 11th.
Thank you, Tim. And I want to, first and foremost, thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
And for your sacrifice. A Purple Heart is not something that any soldier wants to achieve, but it is a very well-respected and honored medal for their service and for their sacrifice. And with that, the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion would like to give you a donation, $10,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, I appreciate it again, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. And these proceeds, I, I mentioned that a lot of the stuff, food, amenities are provided. These, this donation will go mostly to covering airfares, transportation, insurance, some of the administration stuff that can't be donated here from the community. So this is a great asset that allows to keep running this event for years to come.
Thank you much, Tim. The OBX Jeep Invasion is growing, so much so that the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion is now one of the top five Jeep events on the East Coast. We actually have jeepers that take their time on vacation, and they want to go to a Jeep event, and they'll forego other events to come to ours. And that's just, says volumes for us and for, for what our organization's been able to do. And as we are growing, the OBX Jeep Invasion has branched out and under the promotion of Pam Wibley, in the spring of 2027, we'll be having the Outer Banks Overlanding Event. So we'll have the OBX Jeep Invasion and the OBX Outlander Event. So we are growing, and we thank you for everyone's support, not only from the board, but most, most importantly, from the community of Dare County and Currituck County. And we appreciate it, and thank you so much, and Merry Christmas.
That, Mr. Chairman, we'd move to item 8B, and this is a Dare County Tourism Board request for consent to expenditure from Restricted Fund Line Item 4999 Tourism Impact Grant awards, and Lee Nettles is here for that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Lee.
Good morning, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, happy to be before you to request your consent on our Tourism Impact Grant application this year. We received 12 applications. Just as a reminder, this is a once-annual grant line item. It's a tiered match, it's paid on a reimbursement basis after proof of expenditures, and, and of course, it, it pays off on the restricted fund legislation, which is for program or services needed due to the impact of tourism. As I mentioned, we received 12 applications this year, and they, they really group into two main buckets, safety and, and pathways. We had seven different applications that were for multi-use paths, sidewalks, and also a lit crosswalk in Roanoke Island. And then the other grouping are just more quality of life. We had Avon Property Owners Association with Beach Accesses, for instance, an expansion of the dental clinic at the Community Care Clinic, Kitty Hawk Life Saving Memorial. The Aquarium requested funding to provide a protective casing for James Melvin paintings that they have. And then Outer Banks Forever requested funding for restoration of the double keeper quarters at Body Island that was damaged by fire, you'll recall. All total, the, the amount of awards that were recommended by the Tourism Board at the November 20th meeting unanimously totaled $1,790,068.06. That takes the, the funding through the Restricted Fund, as, Mr. Chairman, as you point out, between our event grants and the Restricted Fund grants, this would get close to 28 million that the Tourism Board's been able to reinvest in the community with, with your consent. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Lee?
Yeah, I had one. The big number, of course, is the construction from Carol East, I'm sorry, from Carolista to Soundside.
Yes, sir.
Ridge, right along Jockeys Ridge, I presume on the west side of Highway 158. What is that 4,500, what do we expect to happen on that three-quarters of a million-dollar investment?
Well, it is a, a matching grant. I, we, we only recognize the, the need that's there. The application would connect multi-use paths from, practically from one end of Nagshead to the other, north to south. It is going to be quite an engineering challenge. I think that's what you're getting at with the, with the sand.
Well, I am. And I'm wondering whether we're going to be hearing, I mean, not to make light of it, but public comment that we have DOT out there with the plows keeping the multi-use path clear as Jockeys Ridge spills over going from west to east, which I, frankly, we all see routinely when the winds really go. Has anybody thought about that? There used to be a golf course there.
Yeah, we, we're, we're not involved with the engineering decisions, just the, the review of the application and the determination of the need. So we leave that to the applicant, the town of Nagshead and their engineers to put forth a solution.
Yeah, that's a fair answer, Lee, but do you have any?
We, we raise that same concern and same question.
Sort of questions, concerns, as I do, and I'm looking at three-quarters of a million dollars. Go ahead, Erv.
So we, in the town of Kitty Hawk, when I was there...
So we, in the town of Kitty Hawk and elsewhere, put the extended shoulders, four-foot on each side of the road, right there in Kitty Hawk, right in front of the Black Pelican. We ended up buying a tractor with a broom, and those guys are out there on a daily and weekly basis clearing that. And that's what Nagshead's gonna have to do. It's not a DOT gig, it's gonna be Nagshead.
So it's a reduction to the unemployment factor, as well as a construction of multi-use path. Kind of a dry land Zamboni.
But it's something, you have to maintain it, and that's what they're gonna have to do.
I mean, I swear, honestly, guys, I mean, I'm being a little lighthearted here, for sure, but that ridge moves. We see it move, we see it go down, we see it move. I just feel like, are we, I don't know, is the 3/4 of a million dollars connecting along that stretch, which I drive all the time, and I see it, and I, I understand the And you're saying you also had these questions, but the answer is, we're gonna build it anyway because town of Nagshead's requested it?
Well, the town of Nagshead has put forth this application.
Yes.
And our consideration, is it a program or service needed due to the impact of tourism? And certainly, the safety is improved by keeping people all on the west side and being able to connect that vital link, keep them on the west side of the highway.
Because right now, the multi-use path stops at Carolista, right?
Yes, so, or, yeah, so Hollowell, you have to cut over.
Hollowell, yeah, sorry.
Get over to the beach road multi-use path.
Yeah.
And then come down, and you have to take it for a bit before you can, it actually, right out Soundside, it picks up again now, the multi-use path on the west side.
Yeah. Am I off-base, guys? Am I just kind of chasing a wild hair here and let it go?
I mean, I get what you're saying, but I will just tell you this, my thinking, any way you can cut down the resistance of interaction between vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and you can do something about it, you need to do it. I think it's money well spent. And they can just get their broom tractor out there and sweep it off, like everybody else does.
Our area is known for some engineering marvels. I mean, they say we couldn't move the lighthouse, and we moved the lighthouse.
By God, Lee, we can do it.
We can do it.
We can do it. All right, I'm inspired. All right. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve as presented, is that second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you so much.
28 million to date. Fantastic.
Yes, sir. If I could, just like to echo some of the comments and pay respects for Terry. He was a member of our Tourism Board, so we will definitely miss his leadership and guidance and just as a person in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee.
Chairman, that brings us to item 9 on the agenda, and Matt has several budget amendments
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning. I will do these out of order. I'll start with the early college, and I'll address Mr. Parker's question on the funding. So this, as it's worded, is really just creating the budget based on the final amortization table, meaning now that we've issued the debt, we know what it costs, and we have to budget for it appropriately. So the early college debt is actually funded through the capital investment fund that we have for the capital projects.
Is that a restricted fund, Matt?
It is restricted in that the funding comes from sales tax revenue. So this specifically, the fund is Article 40 and Article 42 sales tax revenue.
Right, and that funding may be used to do what only?
Capital.
Capital, for, like, we can build pathways?
Cannot.
What can we build with the capital? I'm leading you somewhere.
A school pathway, maybe.
Schools. It is restricted capital for schools.
And additionally, there's a lottery fund also that funds schools, and so there's also revenue.
Right, but the vast majority is coming from the two sales tax revenues.
Yes, sir, so.
Okay.
Yep, so it's those three revenue sources support this investment fund, and that is what is funding the debt service for early college. The other two amendments, one is to correct the community development housing appropriation of $5 million to the disaster recovery storm fund. This was in follow-up to board direction of October 6th. And the third is to restore the budget for debris removal and our operations, emergency operations budget. So mechanically, our county manager can use our emergency operations budget, which we did for the debris removal in Buxton, and then this restores that, and from an accounting standpoint, shows the expenditure as debris removal, so.
If we, I was just gonna confirm, the concern we heard in public comment was, has this money been budgeted for the early college amortization schedule, and is it coming from the county? The answer is, it has always been part of that budget, funded by the state sales tax in the restricted capital fund for schools. It does not impact the Dare County operating funds, as it were.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the premise of his question was, we were gonna get this lump sum of money to build the college. We get the sales tax money, it's not part of the state budget, and so each quarter, when they pay the sales tax, we get that money, we reimburse our funds, whatever we put out with that money. And so the answer to your question is, yes, we got the money in because we got the sales tax in to pay the debt with.
Yep.
All right.
The collapsed house debris removal, there's gonna be another bill coming in for that, right?
Yeah, so this is reflective of...
This is just up to now?
Correct.
Okay.
We've had three collections. This is two of the three?
This is the two that we've been invoiced for and the estimate of the third, so.
Oh, it's two and the estimate of the third?
So that's a lot less than we thought we were gonna...
Wow, that is a lot less than I thought.
That's why I'm like, is this right?
Yeah.
In a good way.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know until we've gotten the final invoice, but this should be the...
I will say, we have been very pleased with that contractor and the way that he keeps time and the way that he charges. It's been very reasonable and very fair, and as you can see by those numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Significantly, maybe half of what we actually thought it was gonna be.
Exactly. That's why I was like, am I reading this right, or is there something I'm missing?
You're right.
This is great.
So you need a motion to adopt the amendments, correct?
Yes, please.
Pleasure, the board.
Make a motion to adopt the amendments.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, been seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Matt.
Chairman, item 10 on the agenda is 2026 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule for your review and satisfactory approval.
We may have to make a few changes to that, but for now, let's get it on record for the meetings, and we'll make some adjustments in January if need be, so.
I'd like most to approve.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chair, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your consent agenda. On it, you have the approval of amendments from November 3rd, you have a land transfer tax refund, you have a designated agent approval form, you have a DWR, WRDG flood resiliency grant budget amendment, you have the Dare County Early College utility easement, you have a Dare County real property sale resolution, and you have the county tax services, services
Most to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman House to approve as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item 12 are your board appointments. First is the Tourism Board. For the OVRC, John Head's term expires this month, he's eligible for reappointment, and the Outer Banks Association of Realtors recommends him to be reappointed.
Motion, motion to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by a vice chair, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Dare County Board of Commissioners seat. While the Overman's term has expired this month, he's not eligible for reappointment, and the board needs to appoint a new commissioner to fill that seat. Nominate Rob Ross.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate Rob Ross.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
I'm gonna get to the bottom of that sand Zamboni now that I'm on the board.
Here we go. Look out, look out Tourism Board.
Lee, you're in trouble.
Look out Tourism Board.
Next is your at-large seat. Test Judge's term expires this month, and she is eligible for reappointment.
Motion to reappoint Test Judge.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
For the next two, the town of Nagshead and the town of Kitty Hawk, both would like to send in their recommendations at the January meetings for those two seats.
Absolutely.
And then the Dare County Restaurant Association, Mary Balog's term expires this month, he's not eligible for, I'm sorry, Mark Balog's term expires this month, he's not eligible for reappointment. The Restaurant Association doesn't have anyone to recommend at this time, and they'll recommend somebody later.
We will, we will reach out to the association to see who we can get to be appointed to represent them.
And then your upcoming board and committee appointments. In January, you have the Working Waterman's Commission with one term expiring. In February, you have the Planning Board with three terms expiring. And in March, you have the Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 13, Commissioners Business and County Manager Attorney Business. Do you have anything else, county manager, for us today?
Yes, sir, at the appropriate time, we need a closed session. And then, back when we first started housing, we had a contract with DFI to help us do some survey work and do some work with regard to the housing projects. They did the work, the project that they worked on in Nagshead didn't work out, and so that ended. They also had a contract that included the Buxton property, and those contracts provided that if we developed either of those properties, then we owed them whatever the percentage was of that in the contract. We're moving forward now, DFI has done all that they're, said they're gonna do, and what I don't want is, I don't, we don't want a contract that says if we do something in Bowser Town, all of a sudden, we owe DFI some money. So I have an amendment to the contract that I've talked to them about, they're agreeable to that, to basically terminate that contract, to clean up that work that they've done. And I need approval for that amendment.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by a vice chair to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then, when you're ready, I will...
Yes, sir.
...do a closed session.
Will do. Public Information Officer Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
Mr. Everybody, if I don't see ya. We're in that season.
Thank you so much, Dorothy, I appreciate it. Matt, do you, Chief Financial Officer, do you have anything else for us today?
Yeah, one quick update. So we would typically have had an audit committee meeting and issued our annual comprehensive financial report in December. With the shutdown, the OMB did not release their compliance supplement, and the compliance supplement is the instructions for the auditors on how to test federal funds. So that, they did issue on November 25th, so we will have that meeting and file well ahead of the deadline, which has been extended now to the end of February.
Good deal, thank you. That brings us to Commissioners Business. Vice Chairman, would you kick that off today for us, please?
Sure thing. One of the things that I hope the county manager can help us address a little bit further, under public comment, there was some legal measures or concerns that were put out about Highway 12 and the flood site and the groins. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that, please?
Sure. She was quoting from the rules, and the rules provide certain things, but remember, the rules are adopted by the Coastal Resources Commission. The statute that bans hardened structures is a statute that bans hardened structures and is adopted by the legislature. The Coastal Resources Commission can't make exceptions to the North Carolina general statutes to take the matter further. We looked at trying to do multiple groins, and there's a 50% rule that applies to repair a groin, and if you took in those other groins and took in the state of disrepair, then...
It's less than 50%.
It diminished the 50%.
You couldn't do it.
And so, to make sure we could do it. And then, we didn't even address the idea of the funding that it would take to do three groins and the amount of money we're already spending in that area. So all those things together, then, that one groin is where we wound up, and those applications are all in, they're before all the agencies, and we're waiting on DCM, Division of Coastal Management, to tell us we are in fact exempt under the 50% rule from permitting from them.
Given what I heard, that should be rejected, because it will be dangerous to the coastline. It'll be dangerous to everything involved. That's what we heard in public comment, repairing one.
Right. So how the groin works, the groin traps sand that travels from north to south. And so one groin will trap sand from north to south. Groins do have an erosion scarf to the south side, because once you starve it from the north, the sand doesn't get to the south, and so there's an erosion issue there. Because those groins have been there, then that erosion has already occurred, and the park service understands that and isn't contesting the idea to put the groins in. So from that perspective, there's no further damage to the south than what's already been done. The other groin, what benefit the other groins would do if we could do them is, the benefit of the groin tapers the further north you go. So right at the groin, it's gonna trap a whole lot of sand, and then as you go forward to the north, it creates like a triangle where the benefit of the groin tapers. And the further north you can build a groin, then the further north the taper goes, and the better protection to get to the north. Again, each groin starves the sand to the south, so if we built the northernmost groin, then it would starve sand from the next groin. And so you put in the next groin to hold sand, to fill in the hole behind the groin before it, it has a scarf behind it, and you put in the third groin to hold the sand behind it. And so, yes, if we had the ability to do a groin further north, it would extend the benefit of the groin further north, but it wouldn't change anything. In fact, it may exacerbate changes to the south, because you'd be trapping even more sand. And so the erosion to the south of the last groin may in fact increase. And so that's where we are, that's what our engineers have told us. We've met with all the permitting officials, we've been through all this stuff with them, and so now we're waiting to hear back from them, and we'll see where that leads us.
Thank you, county manager. Upcoming, one big thing that happened in Dare County on December 17th, I think it was 1903, two fellows, two brothers from Ohio flew an airplane here. And once again, on December 17th, we have another anniversary coming up. Usually, the anniversary has several events happening at the Wright Brothers Memorial, and usually those events start at 9:00. This year, it's gonna start at 8:30, because there's gonna be an extended presentation of things to happen. One of the things is that inducted into the Hall of Fame will be Bill Lear. In aviation terms, I'm sure everybody's heard of the Lear jet. Well, Bill Lear started the Lear jet in the business class private jet set, and that's gonna be his contribution to the world of aviation, and he'll be inducted into the Hall of Fame for that. One thing, on a side note, some of us older people up here might realize what this item is that I'm talking about. Some of our younger generation might not understand what I'm talking about. But Bill Lear was also an inventor, and in 1964, he invented something that revolutionized the music industry, 8-track tape. Eight-track tape. So like I said, some of our younger crowd might not get that. Now, Bob, I'm sure you were around when you first came out with the eight tracks, and you probably put one in your little Ford.
I still got some in a drawer, huh?
Bob invented the eight-track player.
And also, on a lighter note, even lighter than that, and the best part of all of our Commissioner meetings, let's see our pet of the week.
Our pet of the week this week is Addie. Addie was brought into our care with the help of Animal Control. Since coming in, she has opened up and shown her playful side. Addie is around two years old. She loves to play with toys and go for walks. Addie has done well with other dogs and gets along great with people. To adopt Addie or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Oh, look at that.
So please, run down to OBX SPCA, check out Addie. She's a wonderful, wonderful little puppy there. And also, it's, it would be great to give Addie a forever home for Christmas. And also, if you would, check out the other puppies and kittens that are down there. And it makes for a wonderful Christmas present for any young child to have a pet that will give him love for many years to come. So please, run down to OBX SPCA and hopefully give one of their animals a forever home. On a more personal note, I wanna thank everybody throughout Dare County for supporting me throughout my term as a Commissioner and also as a Vice Chair. And very thankful for this whole community as a whole that comes together and gives so selfishly to all of the events and nonprofits that we have along the county and to help out everybody who's less fortunate. And with that, I wanna wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. This is the day set forth, or this month is set forth. If you didn't know it was Christmas, turn on the Hallmark Channel. You'll find out real quick. So please, keep your friends and family in your hearts and prayers. And also, by doing that, let them know how much that your family and friends are appreciated while they're still with us. Unfortunately, we can't do that with Terry Gray. But my heart and pain goes out to his family. And he will be well-known and well-loved throughout our community. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman.
Yes, sir. So Charlie said it the best when you talk about Terry, when you said he was just a good guy. That was, that was him, good person. I've known the family a long time. His mom and a brother ran the Robin, I call it Wacky Wally's, gas station, and Terry was always around there. As kids, we used to hang around the Recreation Center, skating around there. He was about a year and a half younger than I. But we got caught sneaking up the casino at 12 and 14 years old.
Oh, yeah. Remember them days.
Just a super-nice guy. And Terry would call you up and say, hey, listen, I want to let you know I'm coming by. I need some money. We got this thing going on at so-and-so. We're raising money for this. And of course, you know, you never could say no to him because you knew everything he did was to help somebody else. It was never for Terry. It was always for somebody else. So that's the ultimate, just the ultimate guy. So we're gonna miss him a whole lot. And wish everybody happy holidays and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Crean.
Yeah. Start with, today is my one-year anniversary of being sworn into this board. It's been quite the year. We've had a lot of major successes, I believe. Certainly, early on, getting through the new tax assessments and being able to establish a tax rate that's the third lowest in the entire state of North Carolina. Obviously, a lot of work on behalf of our Finance Department and our Tax Department. So all we gotta do is really approve all the hard work that they do. And certainly Bobby, who works diligently on making sure that we don't spend more money than what we're supposed to. So you do, you do a fantastic job, Bobby. And obviously, we'll do a new budget next year. Hey, I'm going for number one. I ain't never settled for coming in third in a race. Carteret County better look out. But secondly, I'd like to start off with my pledge. So in World War I, a soldier in the Rainbow Division named Martin Treppco was killed carrying a message in between lines. When they found his body, they pulled a blood-stained notebook out of his pocket. And in his pocket, he had written in his journal, "My pledge." And he said, "My pledge is to work, to strive, to sacrifice, as if the entire struggle depended on me alone." So in my second year, I will offer my pledge. My pledge is that I will continue to uphold my values and commitment to preserving commercial fishing, small businesses, and most of all, our culture here in Dare County. Our culture is a beacon to the rest of the world. Our communities here and how they work together, not to mention all our numerous nonprofit organizations that many of those who I serve with are involved in. It's amazing to see, just like the food pantry last week, got over 1,500 pounds of food dropped off at Roanoke Island Food Pantry last week to service all of our families in our local areas. That's nothing short of incredible. And the Manio wrestling team put on one of the fundraisers, and they did extremely well. So I'd like to thank Jimmy Metzinger for that. I often tell people about stories involved in our past and how our culture was created. One of which was Willis Gallup, my sixth-great-grandfather. He was the one who tied the lantern around the horse's neck and ran him up the beach to wreck the Spanish galleons on the shore. He took that money and bought all of Martin's Point and all of Okeecoak Island and established a future for his family here with that money. He was a pirate. I also like my sixth-great-grandfather before me and one man. But I have the advantage of having six people beside me who I know are dedicated to their community, and most of them amaze me on a regular basis. Whether it's Bob constantly writing letters and serving our community in the best way he can and using his position to establish a better future here, just like next week, he's going to Washington, DC to lobby on behalf of our communities here. And I think he will be an excellent representation of our county and our beliefs. And I'm proud to say that I'm happy you're chairman again, Bob. But not just Bob. Everybody here brings something to the table. Other day, I saw Michael Burris. He won a raffle, people, and then donated all the raffle to Toys R' Tots. I saw you down there, Mike. That's incredible. Mary Ellen continually fighting for down there in Hatteras. I wouldn't want to be on the other side of that. I can certainly tell you that much. Rob Ross serves his community well. He's all the time going to events and nonprofit organizations all up and down the beach. Steve, obviously, just got done doing his Jeep presentation. What a great thing. And Irvin, for his tireless help in not only nonprofits, but everything you do for Dare Challenge. I personally wanna thank you for that. So I got a good team up here, and I couldn't do anything without them. But I am also one man, so I can bring the lantern. Just like my sixth-great-grandfather, sometimes you can do things, things I'm working on, or potential beach stabilization, looking at semi-permeable structures, potentially, instead of a hardened structure. There's loopholes in everything. Tax relief options, housing opportunities, not only in Bowser Town, but potentially Stumpy Point. And my continual lobbying for commercial fishing, our industry, and all of those in Wannchee, and Manio, Collington, Kitty Hawk, and up and down our coastlines, who work every day on the water trying to provide for their families. With that, I thank you for electing me last year. I hope I've served you well, and I will continue to serve you well for the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Burris.
Yeah, thank you, Christian. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to begin by saying, we did a, an event with the Older Adult Services Board for letting people know what services are out there. Spencer, our Parks and Rec Director, put it together. We held it a couple, three Saturdays ago now. Fantastic event. It was great to see over 400 people come out, I believe maybe over five. Really eye-opening. We do have a lot of folks in the 60-plus demographic here in the county, almost more than we do in the 60 or less. So, you know, it is a demographic that we need to keep an eye on and try and do what we can to make sure that they're aware of everything we have to offer here in Dare County, both private and public services. Another, just quick note, one more thing I wanna make note of is this past Saturday, Dr. Davies and the county cosponsored an event called Friendsgiving. Yeah, okay. I wanna make sure I got it right. Friendsgiving. It was a wonderful event. Over 525 meals served. More than 100 meals to homebound folks who couldn't get out and be there at the event, which is a huge, huge service to the community. Because those folks, a lot of times, you know, not being able to get out and come to the event, they don't get the social interaction that you get from being there. So for us to be able to deliver those to the home and for them to get some social interaction, it was just a well-thought-out, well-planned event. And I just wanted to, I wanted to recognize a few people that were event sponsors and worked the event. First is Chef Scott Foster and his team from Roadside Bar and Grill in Duck. He come in, he prepared everything. I think he provided almost all of the food. They had everything ready to roll. Just a fantastic job on his part. And I'm a firm believer that when local businesses give back to the community and come out and support us, that we should do our part and go out and support them. So if you get a chance to stop by and visit Chef Scott at Roadside, I know he would greatly appreciate it. Rob Waddington, Metro Rental, Tables and Linens, Cisco Outer Banks for some of the food, Riverside Paper and Supply for the paper products, Martin's Bread Company for all of the rolls, the Outer Banks Women's Club for the desserts. And the Roanoke Island Women's Club also did the desserts. And I can personally tell you, they were great. Because I love desserts. You're not gonna get me at an eating event that I don't try some of the desserts. So they were wonderful. Thank you, ladies there. And then the Department of Health and Human Services, all the employees and Dr. Davies. She's out there with one arm, working as hard as anybody to ensure that the event was a great success, and it was. So thank you so much for putting that on. And I had a blast being out there with you guys. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Balance.
Thank you. It was a busy month. It was a really busy month. We did several appearances. The topping off was fantastic. Again, such an amazing event. And so inspired to see all those young people just lifting and supporting each other, going into the Christmas spirit. It's Christmas season, that's such a great thing to see. We also did groundbreaking. So this is a couple of the cleanup stuff from when I was on the Board of Ed. We did the groundbreaking for the fieldhouse at Manio. So after many years of trying to get that fieldhouse off the ground since before COVID, right, David? So to see that finally come to pass was such a great, great time. More serious, we had the RPO meeting with Ethan Summers from Rural Planning. And there was eight areas just on Highway 12 that was on that plan that they're working on. And they've either committed, completed, like the slash bridge is complete and some other things. But to see their commit, there is a commitment there. And I know it's really hard when you don't get to see some of the stuff that we get to see, what's actually happening. There are, there are things falling into place to try to work towards resolutions. So really excited to see that. Also, I put in, Ethan, we passed an application period, but there's several areas on, it's funny that you said something about me and Hatters Island because this is like all of that. Highway 12 on Hatters Island is not very well-lit. There's just no way to really light it that well. But we have identified several areas that we could get some lit crosswalks in some vulnerable areas. And Ethan is helping me to try to get that pushed forward because we passed an application period deadline. But we're gonna see if we can't work towards that. So Secretary Reed Wilson from DEQ, Bob and Bobby and I walked, spent the whole day with him, with Tankard from Kama, and really trying to look hard at some ways and bring awareness to what's going on down there on the beach. And I thank you guys for your time and coming down there and listening to the people down there, what's going on and their struggles. Meeting with CIP, childcare's still there, and there's still lots of discussions for that going on around the whole county, not just on Hatters Island. The housing, the housing nonprofit, we had our first meeting. Everything's up and going, ready to move forward. We've established committees. Committee meetings have already happened, so we've hit the ground running. And there's some good stuff happening there. Blue crab win, getting that off of the agenda for, that was a big win. Thank you to Sammy Corbett for recognizing that that was, needed to happen. And I know you guys all helped push for that to come apart, or come off the agenda. What else I got?
Just summarize the blue crab.
I know.
You went pretty quick on what does that mean, blue crab? That was a win.
Oh, there was some regulations that were added to, there were some regulations that were, they were going to discuss on the, they were gonna limit blue crab harvest. And Sammy Corbett is the chairman of the.
That was the Marine Fisheries Commission?
Yep.
They were going to limit blue crab harvest, and what happened?
Sammy Corbett pulled it off of the agenda for the meeting, so it was no longer, it wasn't discussed.
And that was good for us because why?
They're not gonna limit our crabbers.
Thank you.
The Coalition, the Coalition sent a request and a resolution, as well as the members of the Coalition sent resolutions in opposition to it.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, some folks might not know the details which we're talking about.
Yes, I know, I jump around a lot, like AD. I want to thank Bob for your leadership in the past and look forward to your leadership in the future. And I was gonna see if you guys could figure out a way. I think they livestream those hearings. Do you know if there's a link that we could get for that? For the hearing?
No.
No, 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 for Bob, when Bob goes to Congress tomorrow. Can we see if you can, I'll help you, but like, I don't even know where I would look. I think they do it on C-SPAN, but it would be really great.
I believe it's scheduled for 10:15, or is it 10 or 10:15 scheduled to appear?
Okay. That would be great. And I think I got, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanna also say, I've served as under-chairman on the Board of Ed. I've served as a chairman on the Board of Ed and now. And I'm gonna tell you, that job he does is extremely difficult. And nobody has an eye, I mean, unless you've walked in those shoes to understand what happens. And I don't even touch what he does for Commissioner, to be able to support each of us in all of our personal, you know, wants and our personal things that we wanna see done. And he's supportive, and he guides us and leads us in so many ways. And so, I just, again, going into the, I'm very thankful for all you do, Bob. And I know it's a lot of time away from your family, but it's very much appreciated. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very, very much appreciated. Thank you. Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations. And Vice Chairman, Steve House, congratulations as well. Another year of leadership ahead of you. Good luck, guys. It's been an interesting one we've gone through. I just wanna call out a little attention and give some credit to our Virginia Tillet Community Center and its director, Laura Lewis. It's kinda like they just go about their business, day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month. Veterans recognition events, veterans luncheons, the late October Dare to Scare Charity Run. Now for Christmas, and yes, I will call it Christmas, the Giving Tree for both seniors and non-señors. On the 14th, there will be a children's Christmas party with an elf theme. There is a rumor, there's gonna be an extremely tall elf present at this year's event. His identity will remain classified until the event. And Bob, especially for you, we're introducing a new. And Bob, especially for you, we're introducing a new kickboxing class that I thought you may want to sign up for, be one of the early adopters. But, on a serious note, the Virginia Tillet Center is doing a fabulous job and I'm just thrilled to be a part of it. I see my fellow board member, Susan Bothwell, in the room and we are having a great time with a great staff and doing a lot of good work there. This afternoon, I'm going to attend a ceremony to say goodbye and wish well our longtime president at the Outer Banks Hospital, Ronnie Sloan. He will be retiring and it's at Jeanette's Pier this afternoon and I look forward to congratulating and thanking him on a very, very outstanding career here, serving the Outer Banks health community. On the fourth, I may be jumping ahead a little bit, but on the fourth of, I'm sorry, the twenty-eighth, excuse me, twenty-eighth of February, 2026, I see Commissioner Balance has something up on her thing about a polar plunge. Jeanette's Pier Polar Plunge, Raising Money for Special Olympics. Start training now, that means jumping in. February the twenty-eighth, 2026, the Polar Plunge at Jeanette's Pier, February 28th. It's a great fun event. Participation is growing every year and it raises a lot of money for Special Olympics. Cassie, thank you. I wish you all the best with the early college Mariners embarking on some new territory and a new course, but it sounds exciting and we've all got great faith in your leadership, so I want to wish you the very best and wish you well on that.
Thank you.
You bet. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Rob, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the Grinch not showing up?
No, the Grinch has been retired and will be replaced by a much friendlier elf.
I like the Grinch.
Well, there's a competition for replacing Will Ferrell as elf and right now, I'm one of the leading candidates to replace him.
But you make a much better Grinch.
Well, last year's Grinch was a lot of fun, I admit, but they've changed the theme. So, the theme will be elf. We'll see how it goes.
Commissioner Bateman, I thought the same thing. I was going to ask him the same thing. Commissioner Ross, thank you for your comments and also, thank you for attending that retirement ceremony this afternoon for Ronnie Sloan. He's aware, but I've sent him my regrets, but the county manager and I are leaving right after this meeting for DC. But, please, give him my best wishes in his retirement, if you will.
I will do that. And I did omit one last item. I want to just call it out, recognizing Clerk of the Board, Skylar Foley, Commissioner Balance, and humbly myself, with the appropriately themed red Christmas attire, not to be overlooked by our own Ms. Cassie and our own Mary Helen in appropriately themed red and green. To my fellow commissioners and board members, come on, guys, get with the team, get with the program.
I got red on.
Oh, yeah, sure, hidden underneath.
Can't see red. Anyway, thanks for your comments.
Chairman, one, and I forgot one thing too, believe it or not.
What's that?
The Buxton Civic Association is going to do a polar plunge on January 1st. And so, they have a flyer, if you check out their Facebook page, you can find out more about that, but they're doing a polar plunge on January 1st. That'll be like a primer, that would be like training for the February 1st.
Have they collaborated or talked to the February 28th people?
Well, I don't know, but this isn't January. This is New Year's Day.
I know that.
I don't know. I just heard about it.
It seems to be a proliferation of plunges.
You said January 1st?
January 1st.
January 1st or 30th?
It says January 1st at 10 o'clock.
Starts the New Year off in the water.
Yeah. It's kind of like fun runs. Somebody does a fun run and it snowballs. No, no pun intended.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else, other than the county manager, would like to go into a closed session? Yes, sir.
Chairman, we need a motion for a closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by the Vice Chair, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and I will turn it over to the county manager.
In the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session and consulted with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and took no action.
Thank you, county manager. With that being said, that concludes our meeting for today and I need a motion to adjourn until January the 5th.
As a Merry Christmas to everyone here and to everyone in Dare County, a motion to adjourn.
It's a motion to adjourn by the Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Balance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.